Good evening, everyone. A call to order, the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, October fourteenth, 2021, 6:00 PM. I'd like to ask Danny Lance from True Life Church if he'll come forward and provide our invocation and lead us in our pledge. If everyone will stand.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for everything. For your word tells us every good thing in life comes from you. So tonight, Lord, we take just a moment to say thank you for our city and for these leaders, Lord, that we have elected that have done such a good job trying to make the best decisions they can. I pray tonight for wisdom. I pray tonight for comfort and peace for each of them and for their families. And I pray, Lord, that you would repay them for the time and effort they put in, far beyond anything they are repaid for. And I just pray tonight that tonight's meeting will bring, instead of dissension, it will bring unity, and it will bring forward progress, and it will bring vision, in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'll call Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right. The next item we have is the Employee Milestone Recognition Awards for September 2021. These are the milestone awards for our city employees, which are very important to make the city run smoothly and efficiently, and we greatly appreciate them and their dedication to our city. In this past month, we had five individuals that have met a milestone. Terry Lindhold, fifteen years; Candace Brown, fifteen years; Brandon Clark, five years; Tower Ezell, five years; and Garrett Hawkes, five years. So we have their PIN, their certificate of appreciation, and a check for them that we'll try to get distributed to them by me and the City Manager sometime this week. The next item is a presentation for Dignified Changes, and I'm going to hand this off to Councilmember and State Rep. Mr. Hilton.
Okay. It's my honor to introduce Roddy Coe. He is with Dignified Changes, Universal Changing Tables. He is on the council for developmental disabilities. Governor Haslam originally appointed him, and he's reappointed by Governor Lee, and he is going to present to council and tell us about Universal Changing Tables, and hopefully we will take it under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for your time and attention to this topic. As said, my name is Roddy Coe. I'm a governor-appointed council member on the Tennessee Council of Developmental Disabilities. My most important title is dad to my son Ethan and my daughter Melissa. I became involved with Dignified Changes because one evening I was at a local restaurant just up the road. While out, I needed to use the restroom. There was a guy my age, about my size, on the floor of this bathroom. Number one, we all know how bad it is in bathrooms. Some might say it's even worse in men's bathrooms. He was there with his caregiver being changed. I was only in there for a few seconds, and in that few seconds, you could see the embarrassment and how it affected him to see somebody walk in on him like this. And I'm not talking about the caregiver. I'm talking about the gentleman having to be changed. This young man could have so easily been anybody in our lives. It could have been my dad, my son, or even myself. As a disabled veteran, it is easy to envision any of my brothers or sisters in arms in this situation. The disability community is the only minority group anyone can join at any time. Many individuals in our area, state, region, and country come to enjoy Camp Jordan's festivals, conventions, and activities. In the parking areas of Camp Jordan, young and old, men and women are being changed. They risk being physically exposed so they can participate in a community that is not set up to support them. Just like many of us, they do not want to stay inside the walls of a building. The average baby changing table is outgrown by three years of age. Would you want to lay your child, your mother, or yourself on a bathroom floor? Because that is what's happening here. Individuals affected by disability resulting in their need for this accommodation deserve to have a hygienic and respectful changing space. Today, I ask you to help make Camp Jordan inclusive of all within our community and to install a powered, height-adjustable, universal changing table. In your packet is a one-pager to help you see the problem and how we can correct it. I would like to thank Councilmember Hilton for representing my voice, and I ask the council members to support this important accommodation, allowing all to participate in our great community. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would just like to say we have a really unique opportunity to have a universal changing table in Camp Jordan. We would need a single-use bathroom for that, and I think the cost is around $10,000 normally, but if you have an existing bathroom and electricity, it can be much cheaper, I think, maybe approximately $3,000. Currently, I have raised privately $6,500 to go towards the changing table, and I would ask humbly for the council to consider designating a spot in Camp Jordan to have one of these tables installed. I believe we would be the first city, at least I know a small city, to have one of these in the whole state of Tennessee.
I concur. I think this is a great opportunity for us to step up and make a difference. I would probably, how do we want to proceed with this, council? We need to get with the City Manager to see where the best location, what kind of bathroom would be available.
This was just for discussion tonight. I mean, we have time to plan the details, but I just wanted to put this on everybody's radar because I think it's just very important.
I totally agree.
That every park in Hamilton County has a universal changing table.
With it being a, when you mean a universal bathroom, single universal bathroom, if you have a large disabled stall in a bathroom, I don't know, I'm not sure how big the table is. I mean, I have an idea, but would, can a stall like that be modified to be able to handle that within a multi-use bathroom? Are we having to build just a brand-new, single-use bathroom in order to be able to have one? I'm just trying to figure out this.
We would have to ensure that it's not gender-specific. Because male and female need to be able to access it.
Makes sense.
Access it. The tables themselves are about six foot two inches long, six foot four inches, somewhere in there, and they support about 400 pounds, so even I can get on it. The tables need about a 60-inch turning radius for a wheelchair, and the manufacturer states that 36 inches is needed at one end of the table. But that's what the manufacturer says.
In other words, behind one end of the table, three feet. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, we're doing the math on that. We would need about 14 foot for this six-foot, three-foot, and 17-inch tables.
I believe it's a 10-by-10 room is essentially what is considered best practice.
Right, it's the inches that you give me, and that comes up to about 14 foot, so that'll be a pretty big space. And any bathroom that I can remember being in down at Camp Jordan, handicap stalls, so in the arena, I don't see anything in there big enough in the men's room.
Right.
The other bathrooms out there, unless that new one out there where the soccer field is, is big enough. But we need to figure out essentially location because if they're at the amphitheater, they don't want to have to go all the way to the other end of the park.
Correct. So I was going to see if the City Manager could kind of look at it and see what options we have.
Yes, if you could just look at the logistics and see.
Yeah, area logistics.
I can do that.
I do have a question. Is the stall, does it require your regular plumbing, sink, toilet?
No, sir.
No plumbing?
No plumbing. I'm actually in talks with another organization to get one installed, and they are going to multipurpose. They've actually started using or testing for nursing rooms, so moms may nurse their babies, and they're looking at converting that into like a family room so that they can do that, sorry, or have a table in there, because you can change a baby on this table as well, but no plumbing required.
I think it could be a benefit if there was a sink.
Probably.
I would agree.
That would be optimal.
Just for hygiene.
Or if it was like a family bathroom that you go to in a department store where it's just a, you know, the whole family can use it, male, female, whatever.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. All right. We'll move to item four, approval of the minutes for September 23rd, 2021 council meeting. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes. I will entertain a motion for those.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have approval to, a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Is there any discussion? I see now we'll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item five, communications from citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen, business owner, to come forward and address the council with any concerns, questions, accolades, and each person will have five minutes. We didn't get our sign-up sheet out in time. Thank you, Chief, for looking, but anyone who'd like to come forward, feel free to at this time. I see now one. We'll move to communications from council members. I will start on this side. Councilmember Witt.
I just want to remind everybody that the Optimus Club is having their barbecue on October the 30th, and Jackie and I are selling tickets if anybody would like to see us.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
I don't have anything else.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Cagle?
Nothing.
All right. So I usually have several things to talk about, so bear with me. As everyone knows, Saturday, the 25th, was our centennial. Also, I want to continue to give a big thanks to Dana How and David Tyler for all their dedication and work that they did. This was an awesome celebration. A lot of effort went into this. Our volunteers were amazing. Our city staff was unbelievable for supporting this and working through this. They had to work where everybody else played. Thanks, everyone, to make this a very successful event that we had. We had 25, over 25 sponsors. We had over 90 vendors. We had six bands, food trucks. Our awesome library had Alice in Wonderland theme to make crafts and games. We had kid area with inflatables. We had yard games provided by Top Golf. And I have a few things here down front I'd like to showcase. The City of East Ridge was presented a joint resolution number 576 by Representative Hilton and Senator Gardenhire in recognition of our centennial, which we have down here to the right. After that presentation, we were honored to have Speaker of the House Cameron Sexton. He expressed his congratulations and his excitement for the bright future head for East Ridge. In addition to our council members, we had, again, Speaker of the House Cameron Sexton. We had Senator Gardenhire. We had Senator Bo Watson. We had Commissioner Boyd. We had former mayors Mike Steele, Vince Dean, and we had Vice Mayor Mark Gravitt. So we had a great participation from others that came and attended and supported that. Unfortunately, Governor Bill Lee and our Hamilton County Mayor Cobbinger was unable to attend. Cobbinger sent some words that I read, and Governor Lee actually provided a snippet or some words at the end of our video presentation, which is the next thing I wanted to mention is we had an amazing video documentary of the history of East Ridge that was created and played for the crowd throughout the day, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Hilton and produced by Chris Brawley. If you hadn't had a chance to watch it, I highly encourage you to do so. It's out on YouTube, and I think it's on several other social media sites. We also had a beautiful mural art piece painted by local artist Laurel Dockle, I believe that's how you pronounce it. That is these three paintings here depicting the City of East Ridge, some older of the businesses, some of the new ones. It goes from the ridge all the way down to Camp Jordan. It is amazing, a lot of time and effort. And then she donated it to the city after the fact. So we are going to hang this out, hopefully, in the lobby here, probably in some sealed cases and stuff, and display that. The other thing, and it's down here in front of this podium, Wado Bicycle Co-op graciously donated this creation of theirs that was the 100 Year of East Ridge. So that's made with used bicycle parts, and I saw that throughout the day and considered buying it, but they wouldn't sell it because they donated it to us at the end of the day as well. So that was awesome, and thanks to them. The other thing is, if you haven't noticed or been paying attention, I mentioned that there was the state license plate you were able to go and vote. Well, the voting came in, and there was four designs, two colors, and two options. So the new plate is the blue version with the state of Tennessee and the tri-star in the center. So that will be the new plate that starts being distributed after the first of the year. The 29th with the September, we had a groundbreaking for our new food city, a 54,000-square-foot supermarket and gas-and-go that's going to be located at Ringo Road and Bell's Avenue where the old bowling alley is. This is going to be an amazing store. It's awesome. It's huge. It's going to have a pharmacy. It's going to have a deli. It's going to have a coffee area, a fireplace, a sitting area. It's going to be awesome. And we were there, able to meet with some of the executives, and I feel that this is going to be a cornerstone for promotion of additional development in the west end of East Ridge, which we all have been wanting and desiring to have. They expect to have this open early summer, maybe late spring, but hopefully, should be early, early summer, probably before July, and we're very excited about that. The other thing, on October the 5th, I'm going to ask Chief Allen to come up and give us an update. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I heard it was another great event, another year for the national out, and I'd like for you to tell us a little bit about what occurred and how it went.
Well, we had several different booths set up. Of course, the animal shelter was there, the Optimus Club, police departments, fire department, or Citizens Academy. We had a pretty good turnout. I think the potential weather may have knocked the numbers down a little bit, and we ended up moving it inside the community center, and then, of course, it didn't rain. But I was happy with the event. I would have liked to see more people, but considering the weather and COVID and all of that, then it was pretty well-attended. And I know that, I know you didn't make it, but most of the council was there. We appreciate that and appreciate that support. And tentatively, first Tuesday of October of '22, we'll do it again.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
I'll put it on my calendar. And then earlier this week, we were honored to welcome East Ridge Nutrition South. They had a grand opening and a ribbon-cutting event. They're beside Marco's Pizza on Ringo Road, and we're excited to have them. They have some great loaded teas, some meal replacement shakes, and protein coffee, I think, so it's, we're excited to have them in our city now. I'm not sure if individuals are tracking what's going on at the county level, but I wanted to give an update. First, let me mention Thursday, October the 21st, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, Hamilton County Commissioner Tim Boyd will be holding a community meeting here at the East Ridge Community Center concerning redistricting of our county commission districts. The county commission's taken up the issue of redistricting the county. This usually occurs or can occur after a census when you get new population numbers. And there's been several proposals ranging from two to six additional districts that would result in a total of 11 to 15 possibly. So in the workshops they've had, they've had three workshops. In the workshop on the 29th, they presented a four drafts, 11, a 12, a 13, and a 15 district draft of how the county would be sliced and diced for county commissions, which also results into your school. The 11, 12, and 13, school board, thank you, the 11, 12, and 13 kept East Ridge intact into a single commission. The 11, I mean, I'm sorry, the 15 district split East Ridge at Spring Creek. Spring Creek East was in one district. Spring Creek West to the tunnel was in a different district. In communicating with Tim Boyd through all this, I stressed that I was not a fan of having East Ridge split into two districts, and he totally agreed, and we worked together. I worked through him to communicate to the county commission our desire. So on the 6th, they had compromised to an 11-district option. But unfortunately, as some people do not know in the City of East Ridge even, we have a portion of East Ridge that goes across the interstate over to Navajo.
Yes. East Ridge was there before the interstate.
Correct.
People always want to know why.
So in the workshop on October the 6th, the drawing excluded that portion of East Ridge. Small sliver, but still, I thought it would be confusing, and I wanted all of our East Ridge citizens to be in this single district. So again, talked to Mr. Boyd. He went back to the commission, and the one, they had a workshop the 13th yesterday, and now we've got Navajo included, so our entire city is in a single district, which is what I and most of us would want. So I wanted to thank Mr. Boyd for all his help. It's greatly appreciated to help get this. This is still not finalized yet. They will, they must pass the resolution by the end of December to have time for the redistricting and for the 2022 election. So my understanding is they're planning on voting on this by the end of November, so I'm going to keep my eye on it and make sure that during another workshop that doesn't change, but it's very important, I feel, that our city be in a single district and not split. October the 16th, so upcoming things, Red Wolves will be hosting Toronto FC at the CHI Memorial Stadium for their final regular season game, and we also want to congratulate them on clinching a playoff berth, so that's awesome. That's very awesome. October, Tuesday, October the 19th, I cannot not have a meeting, not talking about our great library. Tuesday, the 19th, 10:30 to 11:00, they will be, they'll have library under the trees, so it'll be a storytime for the children and families through the end of the day. And then on Thursday, October the 28th, you know what we're all getting close to, Halloween. From 3:30 to 5:00, East Ridge Library will have a free drive-through trick-or-treat hallow wheel on through for everyone. You can come and drive through the trick and have a trick-or-treating experience while supplies last. They may not make it to 5:00 if there's a great turnout, but come see the library staff in costume. They do ask that you remain in your vehicle. This is a free event, and there's no registration required. And that, I think, is all I have, probably too much, but try to keep everybody informed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with, East Ridge Animal Services is having a bark party behind City Hall on Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 to 3:00, with adoptable dogs, music, yard sale, face painting, and raffle baskets. Crystal Reno wanted to make sure I announced that so that people could look forward to that and put that on their calendars. In addition to that, before I go further, I'm going to ask, Chief Allen, excuse me, to come back up and talk for a second about the drug take-back.
Thank you. October 23rd, which is a week from this coming Saturday, we'll be doing another drug take-back event. It'll be at the Walgreens at McBride and Ringo Road from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon, and anybody, don't have to be a citizen of East Ridge, anybody can bring their expired prescriptions or over-the-counter drugs and drop them off, and they'll be turned over to the DEA, and they'll be incinerated. So it's real important to do this, because you don't want people dumping their used drugs into their toilet, because then it gets into our water. This is a really good, safe way to dispose of old medications. We'll take liquids. They'll have to be disposed, separated and disposed of another way, but any kind of expired drug or unusable drug, we will take those and make sure they get disposed of properly. We do this twice a year, spring and fall. This is our fall event.
Would you mind telling me the hours again? I was writing down the date in the note, but I didn't get the hours.
It's from 10:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. The mayor already talked about the centennial. Great event, great event. Dana How and David Tyler did a great job co-chairing and getting everything organized for that. We appreciate everything they've done. With that, we had vendors come and say it's the best vending, best sales they have had in years, which is great to hear about how successful the event was. In addition to that, Vice Mayor Chauncey was out this week plotting around in his flip-flops behind City Hall, helping to lay out a fence for the dog park that's coming soon. We have one issue to deal with back there, and that's moving the Hamilton County Pollution Control Air Monitoring Station. So we're slowly working through what to do with that and where to put it, and I will address council on that in the future when we get closer to it. Hopefully, it won't take too long. I've been working with Vice Mayor Chauncey on that as well. Of course, with the bark, the park, Bark Park, or whatever it was called, I'm sorry, we may have to shift around a little bit there, depending on the timing of when the fence is going to get up, but it'll play right into it, dog park with that there anyway, so it'll be, it'll be good. If anybody's looked out over here, you will see there is concrete that has been poured for the splash pad.
Yay.
So it's finally started. Still taking a while, obviously, waiting for other pieces to get in for it, but it is finally underway, the construction for it. So I'm looking forward to that moving forward. They'll be doing the splash pad first, then working on the playground. There are a bunch of bricks that are out there that at one point we thought had some value with names, but we found out there's no donor names on any bricks or anything out there, so we might get our public works guys, street guys, to maybe dig them up to use them for something in the future. Allegedly, there's a time capsule out there. Nothing says time capsule, but I'm assuming it's under Curtis Adams' monument there, is what I've been told, and that's not going to be moved, as far as I know. But we probably need to add a sign to that about it being a time capsule when it was done, when it's supposed to be opened, for when that time comes.
I think we should do another time capsule since it's our centennial year.
We could too.
Mm-hmm.
I'll mention that. The last thing, we're talking about our City Hall security upgrades. As some of you've noticed over here, we have moved up where the clerk window is. We're bringing that further up so we can expand the office and have somebody in there that can, we can make sure it can provide better service to anybody that comes up for permits or things of that nature. We are also constructing a separate back room over here in this corner for the seldom-used area for attorneys to be able to use during court dates, and if there's any other clients that need to use it for that reason. The front door is going to be upgraded in a few weeks. We're putting in a self-opening and closing door there for our disabled citizens to be able to use. We're also adding a doorway to the council chambers over here so that when you walk in, you'll have that symmetrical feeling with the council, the door that goes to the library versus the door that goes on the council side, so it'll be very similar on both sides. So that's what's going to be coming in the next few weeks. Of course, you can thank COVID and labor shortages and things like that that have held up the construction on it, but it is finally moving forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move to old business, which we have done, so then we'll jump straight over into new business. So we have a public hearing for ordinance number 1151.
We're going to do a reading of the ordinance, and this is for the public hearing for ordinance 1151. This is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at 500. to rezone the property located at 4104 Cemetery Road, tax map number 169A-F-007, from R3 Apartment District to R1 Residential District.
All right, I will open up this public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward during this public hearing in favor or opposed to this ordinance for the rezoning. I see no one. I will close the public hearing and move into item B, the actual ordinance number 1151.
Ordinance 1151, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at 4105 Cemetery Road, tax map number 169A-F-007, from R3 Apartment District to R1 Residential District.
Yes, Mayor and Council, a portion of this property at 4105 Cemetery Road was rezoned from R3 to R1 back in 2002, and that left half the parcel basically split zone, R3 and R1. Mr. Lominek petitioned the East Ridge Planning Commission to rezone the remaining R3 to R1. That would make the entire lot at 4105 Cemetery Road, R1 Residential for cemetery use. Now, with that being said, if council approves it tonight, then on the second reading, he'd still have to come back for a use on review since it would be rezoned in R1. The Planning Commission did approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number 1151.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1151.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance 1151, pass first reading. We'll move to item C, resolution number 3199.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Rescue Engine from EVS, the Emergency Vehicle Specialist GNW Diesel Service, to the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Program.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take, I'll comment on this since Chief Williams is up in New York City right now. We're asking the city to approve a purchase of a new Pierce Enforcer Rescue Engine. The purchase will be through the Houston-Galveston Cooperative, Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. It's in the amount of $710,538. The first payment's not due till the next budget year of 2022. If you remember back when we did our budget workshops, we talked about a new fire, a new fire engine. The current fire engine that we have been paying for, back to the general fund, correct, Diane? Back to the general fund from capital.
It's being paid from.
Paid to the capital from the general fund. I said it backwards.
Yes.
The final payment of that is this year. So we'd say we would keep that bookmarked amount to be able to use for the future years that's already part of the budget and use that to be able to pay off this new fire engine. We went through everything. And our estimate, that's going to take about seven years, which is what we figured for a capital purchase like this anyway. Diane has already gotten one quote on the financing for that. We're waiting on the one from.
Bond fund.
From the TML Bond Fund, which hasn't come in yet, from Linda. But when that does come in, then we will obviously bring that forward to the council because you have to approve the debt. But if we approve the purchase on this, we can go ahead and at least place the order bill because it's going to take a year to build it roughly. I'm looking in the back row over there, my fireman. So knowing that, it's, we won't even have our first payment till the next budget year of 2022 for this. So with that being said, we would like to get council approval to get a new rescue engine. It's going to replace, oh, the rescue engine it's replacing is a 2010 Rosenbauer Rescue Engine.
Awesome. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3199.
Motion to approve resolution 3199.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
I did have a question. So this is going to replace an engine that we're currently using and that we're going to be stripping down a bunch of equipment off of this engine to put on the new one?
You will take some of the equipment off that's compatible to be able to use on the new engine, yes.
Then the engine.
No one, we can sell a surplus.
The engine that we are replacing is going to go into surplus and be sold.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Is the old payment going to be sufficient amount for the new payment?
Yes. Notice I looked for confirmation, but yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution 3199 pass. Move to item D, resolution 3200.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designated to open an interest-bearing checking account at First Horizon Bank for funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Yes, we're going to have to put this money into a separate bank account. We should be getting the first draw in the next month. The state of Tennessee has finally pulled down their money from the federal government, and they'll now be distributing it to the cities. And so we had to kind of like check around because some banks are not going to be able to handle such large amounts as the cities will be receiving. And First Horizon will be able to. But our first draw will be about $3.2 million. And this money will be put in a separate interest-bearing account, and it can only be used for specific items. And the option we have is to do a lot of our stormwater with it. So we won't have to get the money bonded out or anything. We will be able to use this money for a lot of the stormwater issues. Diane, please, may I have the money? Can I have, open the account?
All right, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3200.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 3200.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number 3200 pass. We'll move to item E, resolution 3201.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city to accept sponsorships from various businesses for the East Ridge Centennial Celebration.
Yes, this gives you a list, a list of the sponsors. We waited until the end because we had money steady coming in for this instead of bringing them to you one at a time because it's a policy for y'all to approve them. They helped pay for so many, you know, the fireworks were paid for, the entertainment, we, the businesses here really helped. This is just for y'all to give it your blessing.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3201.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I will say that a big thank you again for all of these donations and sponsorships. It was a total of $27,100. That's awesome, to help with our centennial.
I'll hope to give y'all a report on the expenditures and revenues at the next meeting, but I still have a few invoices coming in.
Awesome, thank you. All right, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item F, resolution number 3202.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend resolution number 3198 to correct certain border region payments related to the properties located at 6725 Ringo Road and 6731 Ringo Road for the years 2019 to 2020.
The, we had an issue on the last resolution when we talked about doing the payment for those two properties, dealing with the baseline, that dealt with the border region number there. The number we had in our formulas was 100% of the 6% state sales tax. With that 100%, it gave us the number of 255,000. That was the number we had in here. We found out what we should have had in here was you have to take the 6%, you have to take out 1/2% for education, which brings you down to 5.5%. Then the state disperses to the city 75% of that amount of the baseline or what's over the baseline. So that number should have been 175,574.25. So with that, we just need to make this resolution to amend the resolution to reflect the correct number.
Sorry, I'm doing the math. Really? Seeing how much we're saving. All right, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 3202.
Motion to approve, 3202.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution 3202 pass. We'll move to item G, resolution number 3203.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to appoint as a board member to the Hamilton County Water and Wastewater Treatment Authority to fill the unexpired term of Kenny Custer.
Sure, go ahead.
I'll start this. As you all know, Kenny Custer has resigned or resigned from the City of East Ridge. And with that as well, he is resigning his position on the WWTA Board. So with that being said, we need to be able to have a nomination for someone to replace him. At this time, I can turn it over to you, or I know we don't have anybody yet that we are, that we have. In some cities, the mayor temporarily does it until, I just volunteered, didn't I? The mayor temporarily does it until we're able to get an appointee. But if you want, I can turn that over to you now.
Oh, thank you. Yes, so due to Kenny's abstinence from being, from resigning and no longer working for the city, we do need to fill this board membership. It's one of.
There's.
Seven?
Seven cities, and the county has five of their own appointees.
Right. So we do, and I feel that it should be, my personal opinion is it should be someone that lives in the city. So they're experiencing the WWTA fees. And with that being said, you know, I get emails often, and I probably shouldn't go off my soapbox, but you know, it is, it's very unfortunate that we, let me just start over. So as everyone knows, we're having WWTA increase, increased rates and are very difficult to deal with and very frustrating. But some people aren't aware of some of the backstory on this, that WWTA has been in violations of the Clean Water Act for years. They've been in negotiations with the EPA and the Department of Justice authorities for those, also those over five years regarding a mandated consent decree that, to provide compliance with the Federal Water Pollution Control Act. And this consent decree is a legal settlement between EPA and WWTA to develop a plan to address excessive sanitary sewer overflows and meet needs of our citizens and attain compliance from the Federal Water Pollution Control Act. WWTA has to spend over $200 million of rehabilitation on projects in Hamilton County. These investments will benefit our community by contributing to the health and safety of our residents. Other benefits will increase compliance of the federal and state laws and fewer fines, future fines from regulatory authorities. Unfortunately, those benefits has come as a higher water rate cost necessary, water waste cost. WWTA has worked to secure additional funding sources, but the majority of the funding is unfortunately on the backs of a lot of the taxpayers. So the sewer rate most recently decreased by about 9.8%. But that is if you, if you didn't use more than 2,054 gallons of water per month, then you did not see an increase. So the reality is WWTA has no choice but to comply with the Federal Water Pollution Control Act in terms of the EPA. As for East Ridge specifically, at one time, we provided our own, you know, utility service, but as time passed, we experienced aging sewer systems and a treatment plant that become pretty much unfunctional at the later stages and was going to require major repairs and replacement of the sewer lines would have caused enormous cost, i.e. what WWTA is having to deal with. So, you know, it's, it's not an easy answer to swallow, I can tell you that. I pay them as well as everyone else, but I just wanted to give a little backstory because I think a lot of our council members get emails from and phone calls as well as I do. So I just wanted to give a little backstory and then, so back to the resolution, we do need someone appointed as a board member to help voice our concerns and our questions and things to WWTA. And I do feel it needs to be someone that lives in the city that's impacted by this so they, they are experiencing it and can represent us well as.
And it helps for someone to have a little knowledge of wastewater.
That's, that's absolutely correct.
Construction of wastewater activities.
So I don't know if someone has an appointment they're thinking of at this point. As the city manager said, I, I will take it as an interim if, if, to fill this in because we do have a meeting next week, WWTA. But I feel that we should find someone to be that board member to represent our city.
So I'll. Have to have a resolution filed to show who the representative is. Someone would want, like to make a motion for the mayor to be the temporary representative.
I make a motion for Mayor Williams to be the temporary WWTA representative for East Ridge.
I second that.
This is going to be hard to read. So I have a motion to approve Mayor Williams as a board member temporarily by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
So we're only going to have one restriction that they are familiar with waterworks?
I don't know that that's a restriction. I think.
It's not a restriction, but it's probably a good.
I think it's a good qualification to have. And I also think it's good that they actually are the resident.
Yeah, I do too about the residency, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to advertise this or some?
I was going to say that as well. I think, you know, advertise it to anybody that's interested in it, just like we do board appointments. If someone's interested, you know someone, mention it. If they want to email in, you know, recommendation, I'm sorry.
I just said good luck.
Yeah. I might incentivize emails for, no, I'm kidding. Any other questions?
No, I'd like to put a little insight into why the city got rid of the sewer plant to begin with.
Okay.
I worked down there beside that thing, and it sure did stink. As we were being fined or fixing to be fined for our pumping station, our grate, creek ourselves. So you see it floating down the creek past us, and the way that we disposed of the sludge was hauling it from there to Georgie, splattering it all out of the back of the trucks down to Georgie, dumping it on a farm. So that's the main reason why the city got rid of.
Appreciate that explanation. So, yeah, we were having issues as well, as mentioned.
Oh, yes.
So any other discussion? Any other nominations? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle. Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
I guess, yes. I will move to item H, resolution 3204.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to appoint as a representative to the Management Committee of the Hamilton County Water Quality Program to fill the unexpired term of Kenny Custer and blank as the alternative representative.
Hamilton County Water Quality is, all the cities, municipalities in Hamilton County are part of that as well as Hamilton County. We're under a MS four Stormwater Management Decree, or I'm not sure what the exact word is. But with that being said, this deals with storm water and the water quality of the storm water. So every municipality has an appointment to this, and Kenny was, Mr. Custer was the appointment as of April of 2018, with Mike Howell being appointed as the alternative effective the same, that same date. Mr. Custer's left the city, and another appointment will need to be made to fill the unexpired term, which is through the end of March of 2022. And if necessary, for an alternate.
Thank you, sir.
Want I to keep going?
That, go ahead, or I can, either one?
I've talked to Mr. Howell, and he's already the alternate, so he has agreed to step up to be the, the appointee for that. And if necessary, I can be the alternate. Or anybody else, if you want.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'll take one too.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for resolution, or a nomination, an appointment and an alternate nomination. Or we can go with the recommendation of city manager.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number 3204 to appoint Michael Howell and city manager Chris Dorsey as the alternate. Michael Howell as the representative.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton, appointing Michael Howell as the representative and Chris Dorsey as the alternate. Do we have any discussion?
Need a second?
I'm sorry?
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Council, Councilmember Witt was the, the motion, and Councilmember Hilton was the second. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. I'll move to item I, resolution number 3205.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a temporary special events beer permit for Randy Carpenter on behalf of Ducks Unlimited.
Yes, Mayor and Council, family concessions and Randy Carpenter, the owner, have applied for a temporary special events beer permit for the Ducks Unlimited event inside Camp Jordan Arena on October 28th. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3205.
Make motion to approve, resolution 3205.
Second.
A motion approved by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item J, resolution 3206.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a temporary special events beer permit for Randy Carpenter on behalf of Aries Fight Series.
Yes, Mayor and Council, same situation, family concessions and Randy Carpenter are applying for a temporary special events beer permit for Aries Fight Series. This is a MMA fight inside Camp Jordan Arena on October 30th.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 3206.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 3206.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to item K, resolution number 3207.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a temporary use permit for True Life Church to assemble a tent on property located at 4104 Ringo Road to be used for religious services.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council. True Life Church had most recently obtained, as you know, the Salvation Army building. They're in the process of installing a sprinkler system and other required modifications before they can actually occupy said building. At the same time, they had to vacate their previous location. It resulted in a need for them to temporarily have their church services in the parking lot and potentially under a tent. They were supposed to obtain a permit with council prior to doing this, but because it was an emergency situation, as you all know, I emailed all the council to, to make them aware of it, to temporarily let them have a permit contingent upon approval by the city council at this meeting.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion for resolution 3207.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution 3207 approved. We'll move to, that is the last item on our agenda. So we'll move to item L, which is discussion of the tentative agenda for October 28, 2021 council meeting. Under old business, we'll have the second and final reading for the ordinance number 1151, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at 4105 Cemetery Road, tax map number 169A-F-007 from R three apartment district to R one residential district. Do we have any discussion? See none. Under new business, we have a unnumbered ordinance, an ordinance to rezone 1410 North Max Smith Road from C one commercial to R three residential apartment district. It would be the first reading. Yes, sir?
Sorry, Mr. Howell, this was one, the developer requested to move this to November 11 agenda and not have it on the October 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
No update? Yeah. Wait till the next one.
We can wait.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, sir. November 11?
November 11, I think that's right. I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, because it's on Veterans Day on next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then item B is an unnumbered ordinance, budget amendment. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir, this will be the first one for the year. And we will be moving, when the budget was passed, we had the stabilization, the salary stabilization with all under general government, so now I have to disperse it out to the different departments. I'll also have to do the, show the revenue expenditure for the money that came from the governor through the budget that we're using to purchase cars. You know, I'll have to do that. And for the solid waste, I'll do the same thing for their salary stabilization. And there could be other things once I start looking.
All right, thank you. Any questions, any discussion? See none. That is all of the new business is, yes, sir?
I have one more thing to add, if I could. One thing I forgot to mention in my report. I'll make it very quick. While Diane and I were out of town at a seminar last week, we opened up the bids on the multimodal project. We haven't had a chance to really dive into them, so we still have a lot of work to do on that. But I wanted to let you all know, the estimate for that project on Ringo Road was 4.2 million. The bids came in at 6.3. So we need to look at those and figure out what our next step is and where we need to go. But I just wanted to let council be aware, we did have the bid opening. That's as much information as I honestly have right now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other business, counsel? All right, see none. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Everyone have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.